All right, we'll bring the meeting to words November 1, and we'll change the order around a little bit. What we're going to do is we're going to take item number three first. That is the request for an extension of approval for the Chapaclo Central School District. This is an application for a preliminary subdivision, a plot, steep slope permit, tree removal permit, and stormwater pollution prevention plan approval. This is at Button Hook Road and Sabina Road. So we last heard this on September 13th. So the action is another extension as requested by the applicant. So perhaps Bob or Sabrina can bring us up to speed with regard to, or our council can bring us up to speed with regard to where they are and what's going on.
Yes, they're responding to comments from DEP right now. I attended a few of the meetings with the superintendent and their representatives and the applicant and the attorney. They still have quite a few comments to respond to from DEP. That's where they stand right now. I think it's like their third iteration, I believe. So, I mean, I have no objection to the extension.
Right, and they just received this on, what, September 15th is the date of the note that came from DEP.
Yes, sir, Chairman, that's it. That's like the third, second or third letter they responded from them.
Right, and you indicated, I think, in an earlier conversation that there might be even more to come later on from someone else at DEP.
That is correct. Plus, I believe there were some inquiries and I sent the refills with the SWIP for the Inspector General's office. I sent that down to Charlie Silver. So I'm sure they're going to have some comments on the application as well.
Okay. Anything else to be added, Ms. Motel?
Hi.
I have a question. Is the investigation of potential Native American burials or activities, is that part of what is eventually going to be done for this project?
Well, I think we've spoken to that before, and I think Jennifer, you had given us some information with regard to what we might expect when we see this for the final plot application.
That's correct, yeah. I did circulate a memo to the board several months ago. I can recirculate that just to kind of outline what the process would be with respect to that issue.
Okay, but there's no new news, right?
Nothing new that I'm aware of, no.
All right.
Anyway, Ms. Motel, is there anything else you would like to add?
No, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, Kristin Motel from the law firm Cuddy &amp; Fader for Chapaclo Central School District. As Bob mentioned, we did receive those comments, or rather substantive comments, in September. And right now, it's my understanding the board is meeting and trying to make a determination on how they'd like to proceed with addressing those comments. So, right now, we're requesting the extension of time and we'll keep the board apprised of any updates as we move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you have any questions at all?
Yeah, concerning-
Let us know who you are, so, for the record.
Hi, I'm Julieta Duran Buchsbaum.
Julieta?
Duran Buchsbaum, Duran like the band, hyphen B-U-C-H-S-B-A-U-M.
You may need to speak up.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry, everyone.
Our speakers hanging from the ceilings here. It's like a delicatessen.
It's a lot of letters, I'm sorry. Yeah, just regarding the NAGDEC declaration, should that new information come up regarding possible concerns about fauna and flora as well as the indigenous heritage sites, would the NAGDEC declaration potentially be revisited?
I don't know. Jennifer can speak to it. I think flora and fauna was probably included with the initial studies and the, obviously, what was not looked at, not considered was the indigenous people's information. So that's something new. And I think what Jennifer's alluding to, we had a memo where we will suggest to the applicant when they make their application for final approval, that they will need to address that, at least to give us some information.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify with respect to the indigenous people's archaeological information, that is a category that the planning board did review in its initial secret determination that resulted in the NAGDEC. But there is new information that has been presented to the board, and there is a, you know, there's a formula in the secret regulations for determining, for the board to determine whether that new information is going to warrant further secret review. Right now, we don't have a final subdivision application before you. Once you do have that application before you, if and when you have it, you know, we can undertake that evaluation to determine whether further environmental review will be necessary in order to grant final subdivision approval. But I do just want to clarify that historic and archaeological resources were the subject of the planning board's NAGDEC at the time it was issued.
Jennifer, I have a question. The, is there a time window on a NAGDEC that goes into play after, you know, the decorations been made? Or is it tied to the approval of the application itself that the NAGDEC is tied to?
So it doesn't expire, if that's what you're asking. The statute of limitations for challenging the NAGDEC has long since expired. But the NAGDEC itself remains with the application unless there's reason to revisit it in accordance with the formulas set forth in the regulations.
Yeah, so I was, forgive me for not stating properly. I was asking about whether the opportunity to challenge it had expired or not. You say that it has?
Oh, yes, definitely, yes.
But it's at our discretion to reopen it if we think that it's warranted based on new information?
If it meets the thresholds in secret, which I outlined in that memo, and I'm sorry, I don't have the language at my fingertips to recite it for you. But essentially, it's that if the new information is in fact new and there's case law that describes what is in fact new information and whether it trips the threshold for being a significant impact that wasn't studied previously.
Thank you. But who will make that determination, whether or not it meets those?
You are the lead agency, so it would be your determination.
Thank you. So we have the opportunity as lead agency to essentially challenge ourselves, whereas a member of the public or another claimant on the process would not?
Well, right, it's not challenging. It's, you were presented with new information, and the question is whether that new information is, you know, rises to the level of reopening secret. And that's a determination that I think that you should make once you have an application before you.
Understood, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, is there a motion to grant the extension sought by the applicant?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's carried 4-0, so we'll see you soon, maybe.
What's the extension? I mean, how much time did I just approve?
Three months.
Three months?
Is it three months or 90 days?
90 days.
Extension would be to February 25, 2023.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, okay, great.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Okay, we move back now to our regular agenda and we'll take our first item, which is an informal appearance. This is the Gudsetz application, 63-7 Bridges and 4 Winthrop Road. This is an application for a tree removal permit. So if the applicant can present, or maybe even share a screen and show us the plan, we'll take it from there. Is that yours, Brad?
It is, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, nice to see you all. For the record, Brad Chorst from Zaren &amp; Steinmetz, joined by Brian Gudseit, as well as Frank Giuliano, landscape architect. So this is an application to remove 10 trees within a clearing and grading limit line, as well as an additional nine trees outside of that limit line, five of which are dead. And the whole purpose behind this application is to create a visual corridor between two back-to-back lots that the Gudseits own. So I will share the screen and just start with, give me a second. I'll start with just an aerial. I had it up, and here it is. So here are the two properties, back-to-back. 4 Winthrop is the main residence for the Gudseit family. 63-7 Bridges has a pool house and a pool that's under construction. So again, both owned by the same family, and the intent is to open up a visual corridor, not alone the entire length of this rear property line, but at least a portion so that there can be connectivity and again views between the two sites. The clearing and grading limit line was established by a subdivision that was approved by your board. I'll show that very briefly. Again, here are the two lots. And the orange bubble, this is the extent of the line. It wasn't surveyed or anything. It was just this sort of handwritten bubble denotes the clearing and grading limit line on the file plot. And so now I'll pull up the landscape plan that Frank and Ben walked the board through. You have the full plan, just for ease of review, I'm going to zoom in on the area of removal. All right, a lot of the information on the right are just the different types of trees that are being removed and the replacement calculations. So Frank, do you want to walk the board through the trees being removed?
Sure, can you hear me, everyone?
Yes.
Yep.
What you do, in this plan, you're looking towards the main Gudseit property. So the trees that are in the light bluish greens are the trees within the clearing and grading limit line that was established during the subdivision that we're looking to remove so that there is that visual corridor between the two properties. What we had done is first have the trees plotted by a surveyor, which was Merritt's Associates, and then had the team from Olmsted Tree Service, their arbers come. And actually, there's a report, you probably have a copy of it. Am I right, Brad?
Yes, that was submitted.
That they gave a designation of the health of the trees in the blue. One thing to explain, if you're looking at this plan, the trees to the north or to the left of the trees, and all that's being saved, there's no other trees on that property line that would be removed. Everything on that property line, only in green, that was established during the subdivision. So those trees, you could see how close they are. They were established as a five-foot hedge, basically, during the subdivision. And now they're tall trees. And some of them, they range in height from 15 feet to 18, 20 feet. If you look at the actual tree survey that says trees within the clearing and grading limit line, we used the Olmsted designation for the species of tree, the size of the tree, and the condition of the tree. And in the report, as it stated, that of all those 10 trees, only one is in good condition and is a hemlock. The rest are in marginal to poor condition because they were planted very closely and they're suffering from that. They're not the native plants. Everything else on the site grew by itself, except there's a row of some hemlocks on the north side that were probably planted also around 1998.
Frank, take a pause for a second. I just want to switch over for a second to some photos that we have that could better demonstrate what you're describing in terms of existing conditions. Just a couple of photos that show what exists today that's being proposed come out. This is a view from the main home, again, into the pool house, which is in the rear back there. This is again a view from the Gudseit living room out to the pool house. So I figure it would save you all a site visit. We brought the trees right to the board meeting.
Do you want to share that screen again of the tree plan?
That's exactly what I'm going to do.
So of the 10 trees, only one by Olmsted Arbers was classified in good condition. That would be the hemlock number 11. Then, on the extreme south side property line, there are trees we're looking to remove, basically, because they're in very poor shape. There's invasive species there. There's a tree of heaven in there, which is, only two of the trees there are within the 15-foot corridor. And they are both labeled as hazardous trees. They're huge, if you went there, you wouldn't want to walk under them. One is a tree of heaven, and one is an old locust tree. All the other trees in that purple color are outside of the clearing and grading limit line and outside of the 15-foot buffer. All the other trees on the property are being preserved. No others would be removed. So the only trees scheduled for removal here are in the blue to establish a connectivity to the two lots, and the purple, which are basically either dying, dead, or invasive species.
So Frank, also talk about the replacement.
All right, do you want to go to that plant list? On that tree? Let's scroll down some. Regarding the replacements, number one, we'd like to state, going over Dennis's memo and speaking to Dennis, I want to clarify that whatever the code is for replacements, we will follow. Right now, there is 129 caliber inches of trees being removed. I did not calculate, which is never calculated, any dead trees. So it's the purple and the green trees that are marked. That adds up to 129 caliber inches and/or 65 replacement inches. And we have a tree list. Dennis asked that maybe the tree list become more diverse as far as species, we have no problem with that, and add some understory trees as well on the south side. I think that we can easily work out right now. The plan does meet the requirement for replacement, but we're willing to replace whatever we need to. That's not an issue with the client.
Frank, just point out where those trees are being proposed to be planted?
Sure, bring up the plan. The trees are basic, the trees are where the, on the south side, which is the right side, they're being replaced along that side. That really just looks into woods anyway, but we want to screen it. It is the adjoining property. Because you could see where it says 59, that's the adjoining house. So we're not screening the house. The house is being screened by 17 large 3-inch caliber alvevites. And then it gets back to a more natural setting as we get to the rear of the property. On the north side, we're screening the only opening there is right now between 65, number 65, 7 Bridges. There's some opening in there that you could see from the pool into the house property at number 65. So that's going to be planted with spruces. There is two going up from those spruces, which are labeled PA, APA. That's the grove of hemlocks that are existing, and they're staying, nothing's being removed there. As you continue up in that corner, those are all existing maples and spruces that are, nothing there will be removed. So that side is basically left as is with some reinforcement where number 65 and 63 look towards one another. Any other questions? Any questions?
So is the gist of it then to clear these, this vegetation? And of course, to have this visual connectivity? But is the proposal then to, as far as I can tell, clear those trees in blue and then just return this to turf between the two properties? Or is there some sort of planting plan for scattering some trees, and there may be deciduous trees in that area?
The application right now is so that they look like and feel like one property. To only plant on the edges and where those light blue greenish dots are, there would be no additional planting in those areas.
Has the applicant given any thought to a resubdivision? And merging, putting this into one lot and then having the accessory pool house? I don't know what the size is. But perhaps, if necessary, get a variance for that if it's oversized and just have one property here and not be bothered with all these different clearing and grading limit lines and setback lines between two properties?
Yeah, of course. So, you know, you're spot on. You know, the issue was a coverage issue, that the pool house is too large. You know, footprint is too large when you combine it with our existing homes footprint for a 2-acre lot. You know, if this board wanted to approve a variance and let me combine the lots after the fact, knowing that I'm over the allowed footprint, I would love that. It would probably reduce my tax bill and save all of us time here. So if we could add that to the agenda and put a stamp of approval on it, I'm all for it.
Well, you know, the-
I'm kidding Jess, but that was the reason why we haven't combined. But if, you know, if that's something we could do down the road, we would prefer to do it.
I guess one of the issues that we would have is, not to make this difficult for you or anything like this, and not to say you have to have a barrier, et cetera, but at some point, when you have two lots like this, at some point, it could be changed where there's different ownership. And I don't know how we could set up something that might be a future, you know, device, legal device on the property that would require resumption to the normal standards of the 15-foot setbacks on each lot where you to transfer the ownership of one of the lots. I don't think that's practical. But, you know, normally, we look, just in case, and it will eventually happen, of course, where the property will be transferred, maybe again, not a barrier so that you have your visuals, but maybe some scattering of deciduous trees to make it look like a normal streetscape and giving you the visuals that you need, you know, having these deciduous trees leafed up and branched up so that you have plenty of visuals underneath. Just a thought.
Yeah, so I hear you. I mean, there are tons of trees here. You know, the idea is really just to open it up and create a visual corridor. To the extent the properties are sold down the road, you know, I'm sure that, you know, if they're sold separately, you know, both owners would want a buffer restored. And I'm sure it would be something that, you know, would be a priority for them as they invest in their home. You know, so I'm not really sure. Say, I mean, if, you know, if you guys wanted me to, you know, agree somehow to restore the buffer upon sale of one or both properties, I'm happy to do that. But, you know, at this point, our goal is to open it up as much as possible to present as one.
So, that, I mean, the idea of some sort of mechanism to require restoration where there to be a sale of one of the lots down the line, a hypothetical sale, that's, I don't feel that that's necessary for me. The clearing and grading limit line that exists today, subject that I guess came out of the 1989 subdivision, is there exclusively, from my understanding, because this was two separate, this is two separate tax lots. You know, but I guess my point is that the clearing and grading limit line is there because of an imaginary line, right? Not because of any ecological reason. And this imaginary line is not relevant to this property owner. The only, so my point is, I'm comfortable with the removal as long as we can make sure that we're comfortable with the replacement issue. And I guess that's the only question here, is how do we get the replacement right? And just to clarify, you don't own lot B in this, what was a three-lot subdivision, right? You only own two of the lots, right?
Correct, that's correct, A and C.
That's kind of my thoughts.
Sabrina, do you want to run through your comments? And then Dennis, you can run through yours.
Sure, I don't have a lot of comments. You know, the, it's a type 2 action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, so no further action is required of the board. You know, and I guess the one thought that I had is, you know, I'd really want to look at what the exceedances are in regards to the size of the smaller house as well as the coverage, to see if it's worthwhile getting, you know, a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals for this situation to create one lot. You know, unless there's a way to try and put together some sort of buffer that, you know, is vegetated but gives you the view shed that you need. You know, I really leave that up to Dennis, who's responsible for implementing that section of our code. So no further comments from me.
Okay. Dennis, any thoughts? Want to run through your comments?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Come through? Okay, good. Yeah, I mean, I think a number of my comments, Mr. Giuliano had basically acknowledged and, you know, I know I included a fair amount of the algorithmic numerics that we have in our 121-6. So I just wanted to, you know, the two major points for me was one, to sort of present the context of, you know, 1990. It appears, you know, I guess whatever was agreed to in '89, that seemed to be the conditions that remained in '90 based on that not high-quality aerial that I had. But it's been obvious that for over 20 years, this has been treated as a landscape area and that, you know, predominantly is what exists there today. So that's just for context. That's not an opinion one way or the other. That's just fact. So I think what it, you know, comes down to is that, you know, in terms of, I'm not sure, you know, I wasn't here in '89, none of us were, in terms of approving this. So whatever the reason or rationale was at that time, obviously, that doesn't apply anymore. And then, you know, number two, it is difficult to sort of navigate, you know, what is defined in 121-2. So that just, you know, sort of adds an extra layer as to the complexity of the area. But as far as, you know, coming up with a plan that, you know, resembles something that would be not turf cover and a vegetated landscape buffer, I mean, obviously, that's a, to me, that's as wide of an array as a definition is what defines a pool, you know? So I, that is something that, you know, assuming that the board is okay with, you know, sort of reviewing this in that fashion and that, you know, there is some latitude and design considerations allowed and it's not, you know, full restoration to what it was in 1989, then, you know, I think there's something to work with going forward if we're just going to pursue keeping the lot separate and being concerned with the planting specifically in this area.
Okay. Jennifer, is there such a mechanism, if we wanted to pursue it, whereby there would be some sort of easement or something that gives notice to a future buyer and also something that the town would be aware of and could enforce if there's a transaction for sale of one of these properties?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, so it could be in the form of a declaration of restrictive covenants. The trick is going to be, you know, the town isn't put on notice when there's a transfer of ownership, right? So we can put in that declaration that either the buyer or the seller or both are obligated to put the town on notice within a certain amount of time of the property closing, either before or after. But the fact of the matter is, if it doesn't happen, we have no way of really knowing. So the enforceability is a little tricky. But that doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, if the applicant is willing to agree to that condition, that it shouldn't be put in there so that if one or both of these properties are transferred, you know, to another owner, that that landscape buffer can't be, you know, restored.
Well, I think the applicant made a very good point also in terms of any kind of future transfer that it's very likely that these owners would like to see some sort of buffer between them anyway.
Absolutely.
It's, it's very, I mean, I think that, I think that makes good sense. So I guess, I mean, Dick, did you have any questions on this?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
And if I could just jump in quickly, I mean, I'm coming, Jennifer, we could work out a declaration. Look, I get the enforceability. The assessor's office will learn soon enough of the transfer. However, internally, the town can keep track of that, right? It will certainly pop up on the assessor's desk at some point.
Right.
On the next tax roll. So even though there's no requirement to give notice of the sale, the town will eventually learn of it.
So it's, it's interesting to me that the designation of this really very narrow area between the two lots as a clearing and grading limit line. It just seems to be the wrong terminology, right? It is, it really functions more as a buffer, visual buffer than, because it's just not wide enough to deliver what I think were are the intended benefits of a clearing and grading limit line, which have to do with habitat. And sort of the aesthetics of everybody living in the forest and not being able to, you know, having a forest essentially natural environment between built areas of the subdivisions. So I, I don't look at this as a clearing and grading limit line actually, even though it may be termed that way in the documents, I really see it as a, as a visual buffer. And so my comments really relate to that functionality of it. And if there is no need for that functionality right now, there's a desire to remove it, then I don't have any problem with that. And I think that the discussion that leads one to say, well, you know, people who may come back and the future owners of these two pieces of property may decide or not decide to put that buffer back in. It'll let them decide that. I don't therefore think that it's necessarily appropriate or necessary for the town to go through, you know, this process of legal process of, you know, putting these provisions in place, legal provisions in place that require people to do things, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. When really, I don't think there's a real necessity to do it. I'm more interested in the, in the replanting as Eldad has said. The next question on the table is, you know, what about the other trees that are coming down? And what are we doing about restoring or replacing the trees that have been taken out? And I have a question. Dennis, forgive me if I missed it, but the trees that are designated as being in poor condition. And the ones that are dead, there was some discussion about, well, they're so close together and that's, and they can't survive that condition. Is there, is there a way just to thin those out and not take all of them out in order to retain some of them and let them come back to some measure of, you know, health?
I'll just say possibly. I didn't look at it at that level. But my, my greater concern in just sort of pointing that out, and I expressed this to both Brad and Frank, is that, you know, when I prepare these memos, obviously I'm reviewing an application. But I also sort of need to be cognizant of not setting some sort of precedent where somebody is able to create their own situation of decline. And then say, well, the trees are dead. We don't have to replace them. So that was, to be fair, more my focus at the time. I didn't evaluate it with respect to your question from that perspective.
So I'm sorry, Dennis, are you referring to the, to the Norway maples that are being proposed as in a tight grouping on the south side?
No, I was referring to the, the trees that were existing. I thought they were.
Right.
Yes, yeah. And that, you know. And I think Frank concurred when we spoke, you really wouldn't, you know, only arbovites, maybe you would start jamming relatively that close. But when you have these trees that like to spread, I don't know if I would have put them that close. That's, that's all I was saying.
Yeah. Right. So the, the eight, in that regard, the eight Norway spruce that are indicated here on, I'm getting confused about property, the north of the south property line. That are intended to screen the adjacent number 65 from the number 63. And Norway spruce can get to be really pretty big. Are these supposed to be, are these dwarfs that we're proposing here? Or are these to be mature nor- Norway spruce has, spruce has got a really big spread on it. Are we going to be creating a condition where these aren't going to survive? Because they look like they're, they're spaced very, very closely. They can have a 40 foot spread at the base, these trees.
Could I answer that?
Please.
Sure. You're absolutely right. The Norway spruce can have a spread up to 35, 40 feet. These are placed, I think, 15 feet apart. Where they would become more like a hedge row. If you look just to up towards the rear property line, you could see those hemlocks in there where the black dots are along the property line. And they're about eight to 10 feet apart. When a tree is planted as a specimen by itself, it will mature into a specimen. In, in this case, we're trying to really create a hedge row that they will grow and that spruces will grow. If you remove one down the road, you'll end up with just brown sides to it. But spruces, arbovites, if they're planted close, they will just form into one grove compared to deciduous trees, which is part of the problem in the back property line, which Dennis is referring to. Where the, the trees that are in the light blue was that there are a lot of ornamentals in there. I think it was just planted. You could, you could see the diversity. There's arbovites, there's cedars, there's maples, pines. Everything in there was just planted in groups of threes. You could almost see the groups of threes really close. Some of them are four and five feet apart.
Brad, do you want to put up your photos?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So where are we looking here?
Yeah, this is in the back right corner of the property.
From the existing house?
Yeah.
So it's, it's really on the left side looking from the pool house.
On the right side looking from the pool house.
Right. And so you're proposing to remove all of those?
From the blue spruce on the right? You see that one? Right before that, you'll see a smaller evergreen? The backdrop?
You can, you can write on the, you can write on the screen. Bob, do you want to, do you want to mark them as he's talking so the planning board understands and the public?
Brad would have to do that. I can't, he's sharing.
Yeah.
Yep, from there. Yep. Up to where that red shrub is. On the, the, the shorter shrub. No, that group. Yep. From the two Xs, that's the area we're talking about. In the foreground, you're looking at plants that are actually behind the fireplace. So they obviously are not part of that buffer.
So is the, is the other pink tree that's there, is that part of the buffer or is that part of the foreground?
That's out of the clearing and grading limit line.
But are you removing it?
No.
I think that this helps the planning board visualize what will be removed.
Yes. Yeah.
What's the, what's the length of the area that you're clearing approximately and how many feet?
Brad, you want to go back to the landscape plan?
Yeah.
I would say it's about 80 feet.
The only question I have is are we comfortable with the replacement? I agree.
Yep.
You know, normally I would be, myself, I'd be very concerned about taking out any trees. We always are. But in this case, I just can't see that these trees contribute significantly to, you know, environmental concerns that we have or environmental benefits that we look for. Just because there are so few of them and they're just in a, in a, in a row. So I agree with Eldad that we really ought to be, I, I'm more interested in, in the removal of the other trees and the placement of the new ones. And I really don't see a problem so far with placement of the new ones. That's the suggestions here. I would like to be absolutely certain, though, that when we see that, when we say that a tree is in poor shape or it's dead, does that actually be looked at very carefully? Because a tree that's in poor shape doesn't necessarily warrant that. The poor shape is not a technical term. It doesn't necessarily warrant that it be removed. Maybe there are ways to save it. Maybe it's just you know, it may not be in excellent shape, may not be in good shape, but that doesn't mean that it needs to be taken out unless it's actually hazard or is a pending hazard. So I would be concerned about that and look to Dennis to to go through it and to make his determination, which I will definitely honor. So that's my only concern is whether we're taking out trees that are considered to be in this, in this application, poor and dead. Are they really poor or not to be taken out? And are they really dead?
I have to agree with Tom that the spacing, if it were changed, you might be able to save some of the trees. In the same, same breath, there's a, an optional Schedule A, which I'm not sure if that's trees or what that is. I'd like to know because it impinges upon the septic area. You know, and there's also a couple of trees that are near the, the edge of the septic area, if that's a valid drawing. And so you don't want to have trees too close to the pipelines that are trying to disperse the liquid back into the ground. So that might have something, some minor things to do with it. And then I have, just for education. I am most curious as to how come the short environmental form wasn't filled out completely. You know, and, and then in one place it claims that the septic tank is a utility. I, I worked with wastewater projects for 30 years and I never considered a septic tank to be a utility. So I think that's an error. And let's see. And the other one is the item number three on the form, the short environmental assessment form. There's a question about the total acreage of this, of the site. What's going to be physically disturbed? Not a lot, pretty small, but there's no answer to that. And then total, and there's still the three questions there and none of them were answered. And there's another place where some minor things weren't answered, which I could see. Well, I don't even know why they're in the, the form, but they are. So I would appreciate that, you know, that someone go back over and, and you know, take a look at the things, the two things that I suggested, you know, in the form. And, you know, the septic system. Oh, another question. When's the last time that the septic system has been cleaned up at the, at the tank? That's a question to be answered because I think we have, we have a, a rule on that. Sabrina?
I think it's, it's recommended three to five, every three to five years.
Three to five? Okay.
Yep.
Actually, it's a lot of places. It's more like two years, but.
Understandable.
It depends on the usage.
Yeah.
Mr. Brownell, we could certainly go back to the EAF and correct any omissions and resubmit for the town's files. No, no problem.
Pardon me?
I said, we could go back and look at the EAF and fill in any omissions and resubmit the town's files.
Sure, that's fine. Now, these are then I don't anticipate they're hard questions. Good.
So the only reason we're seeing this is because the tree clearing is being proposed in a clearing and grading limit line. Otherwise, this would have been something handled by Dennis, right?
Hundred percent. This is normally would have been a tree removal permit, but because of what you just said, Mr. Chairman, the trees coming down within the clearing and grading limit line. And you get your board approved the subdivision plat, that's why we're here.
Okay.
Hey, but before we go, can I just make one small request? Brad, can I just share a picture of the trees from the other side? I think it gives you a better sense. Can you just kill screen sharing? And I think just in terms of the health of the trees and what these are really accomplishing. So this is from the 63 seven bridges side. My house is behind these trees. This is what we're looking to get rid of. It's not an environmental habitat. It is in poor condition. Just so you have a better sense, I'm sorry about the graininess. I just did this on the fly. But just so you have a better sense for overall what we're debating here today.
Yeah, yeah. It's actually very helpful.
Yeah. No, thank you, everyone.
That's a better pictured show.
It looks much nicer from my side. This is from the other side and it doesn't quite look as good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have to go to a public hearing on this?
Yes.
Okay.
You, you can, you, you can direct a, you can set the public hearing for the next meeting and direct a resolution to be prepared. So they only have to make one trip back.
Right, right. And, and as I see it, unless I'm missing something here, we need a couple of corrections on the application form. I think we have everything else that we need, right? So there's no need for any additional information. So we can set a public hearing and again, direct staff to prepare a resolution. So next time around, we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, assuming that was the direction.
Yeah. Do we have, do we have enough time or space on the next?
We have enough.
Fifteenth?
Can I just get clarification here? When you say next time we're done, I still like Dennis feels only if Dennis feels comfortable in the way in which this is going. Dennis needs to get back out there and look at this again. There may need to be some revisions to the application or landscape plan. So with that caveat, I think that, I think there's a real interest in moving this along. I'm not trying to hold it up. I think we ought to have Dennis be sure that he's comfortable with it.
Yep.
Based on our comments.
Dennis, would you be able to get out there and have, and be prepared for our next meeting on the 15th of November?
Sure. And I didn't want to say anything, but that was a good move on Mr. Gutzite's part because the first photo that was showing up, I was like, wow, I don't remember seeing those trees. So you know, but, but to, you know, Mr. Curly's point, I, I, I thought poor was a little strong. But again, I think the tone of my memo was that point is moot if they're willing to replace what, you know, needs to be or has to be removed as part of the proposal. So I didn't want to get into a debate over, over that as much as right, you're directing, you know, what the replantings would be and where they would be, et cetera.
Well, let me, let me see if I can make a distinction here. There is, what they want to replace with respect to the connectivity of the two pieces of property, visual connectivity. And then there are other trees that are being asked to take out, which really don't contribute to that. Right. And those are the ones that I'm more concerned about, the justification taken about is whether they're poor or dead.
Well, I see. Okay.
That's what I'm looking to.
I think if you went out there, you're talking about the border on the south side. That area has been neglected for so long that the trees that are in there are leaning over. over there. When you walk in there, you could just, everything we're removing in there is because the ones that are numbered there, there's other trees in there that are not being removed. The ones that are numbered in the purple are in such bad shape, it'd be so obvious when you go out there that you wouldn't even want to be under them or walk by them. So I think that's why they're being removed, as you can see.
Dennis can confirm that and maybe take a couple of pictures and we'll be all set?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then Frank, if you could coordinate with Dennis and for that visit and we'll have the report. Okay. So what we'll do is if you could just get those corrections in on the application and Dennis will meet with Frank out there. We'll schedule a public hearing for November fifteenth. Do we need a motion to the resolution direction?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to direct staff to prepare a resolution in anticipation of approval on November fifteenth at the close of the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion's carried for zip. Okay, we'll see you then.
Good night. Thank you.
All right, good night.
Take care.
Okay, we moved to our next item. This is Stansky, one hundred eighty Croton Avenue. This is an application for a site development plan approval.
Mr. Chairman, did you set the public hearing?
Did we need a vote? I, I, yeah, I think we set the date. Do we need a motion to set a public hearing?
I think it was included, I think it was included in the resolution motion, but.
Okay.
To make sure, we can do a separate, yeah, we can do a separate motion, to be sure.
Okay. Is there a motion then to set a public hearing for November fifteenth?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
It's close. All right. We'll move down to Stansky, one hundred eighty Croton Avenue.
Hi, I'm Mary Scott, representing Stan Stansky, who's also here. And I'd like to share my screen.
Please do.
Okay. So, get through the application part. So the Stanskys purchased the property in two thousand. The, the original house was built in nineteen fifty-one and a substantial addition was done in eighty-five by a previous owner. And the house straddles, it's, the, the main part of the house was built in the village of Mount Kisco. Then part of it is in town of Newcastle. In two thousand twenty-one, I met with the Stanskys about doing an addition, which was wholly in the town of Newcastle. So this is the line here. This is the addition. It's six hundred and forty-nine square feet. It met the setbacks, except that we had to do a front yard setback, actually, because of this nine between the line in Newcastle and Mount Kisco. So the clearing and grading line came about when the original Stansky property was here. And when the Surf Lane subdivision was put together in two thousand. I'm sorry, is that for me or?
No, that's just. Just some background noise.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry. Anyway, when, when the Surf Lane subdivision was done, this piece of property was included, but it was called vacant land, not a building lot, and had a clearing and grading line, which went around here. It, there's also a site easement because we're on the corner of Surf Lane and Croton Avenue. So just a little background. Here's our addition. There's a narrow driveway, which is opposite an entrance to the Sawmill Parkway South and Five Surf Lane, which plays a part in this scenario. So what happened was the addition was wholly within, not touching the clearing and grading line. When the construction started, because it's a narrow driveway and a busy road, it was decided to put a road or a temporary road in from Croton Avenue for construction vehicles. I missed the point that we were going over the clearing and grading line. So this is the area that was the access for the trucks. And I just want to show you a couple of things here. So here is the original, the Mount Kisco part of the project or the, the property. And then this is the area that is in Newcastle. Oh, well, that was part of the Surf Lane subdivision. So we have the issue with the entrance to the Sawmill. We have a road here, road here, road here. And what happens is if you look at the topography, everything drains down and runs down into this property. Because of the disturbance, and I'm sure you've seen Bob Seale's photographs, there was a terrible rainstorm in May. Unfortunately, the day before, the construction was done on the addition. The contractor raked the site, put down seed, hay, and then on May twenty-seventh, we had a torrential rainstorm and all the water came down from all these outlets, as well as some water that was, let me go back to the site plan. There was a, a drainage pipe put in for the addition, and then there was also a footing drain pipe put in here. And unfortunately, the contractor had run them out in this direction. When all the water came down, it went down into Five Surf Lane's driveway and it was a disaster. So we met there with Bob Seale and with the building inspector from Mount Kisco and looked at the system and tried to figure out what to do. So the, the first step was to stabilize the property and we did that by, or Mr. Stansky did it by having topsoil, seed and hay and watering it deciduously. The other part to solve the problem is to get the water that comes down and to channel it not toward the neighbor, but what we're proposing is to channel it into a pipe that goes to the bottom of the property and into what's called a level spreader so that it dissipates slowly over, over the area down here, which actually, this is Sawmill property here. So just, we'll show you a few shots. So the idea is to, well, let me go down a minute. So here's an old Google Earth, or, you know, a few years ago. So you can see it was a grassy area. The site is left clear from Surf Lane through to Croton and there was a mix of trees and bushes. This is how it looks now. So we, this is the addition. So we had taken out some bushes around the old porch that was there. There had been some dying ash trees and some bushes that were removed over the time the Stansky lived there. And this is part of a proposed planting plan that Stan had met with the landscape architect about. You can see, this is the edge of the addition. This is looking up to Croton Avenue. There were a lot of invasive species bushes. There were some actually around the house that we took out when this was built. But what is proposed is to, not only the new grass that was put in, which is taken well, but to put in a row of bushes and a couple of trees to help stabilize the, the slope as well as our drainage system, which will bring the water down. You know, we've tried to have it stabilized as, as best as we could and, and, you know, I think it's, when you look at these two pictures, you realize it's pretty similar to what it was before. But the new planting will enhance it and improve it.
Mary, just to add one other thing that we added, we did create a berm up on top that doesn't exist. So as Mary was mentioning, we're, we're sort of the, the mid area between High Ridge Road and then below. So the water was just, that, the day of that flood really was just channeling all the way down. So we really have nothing to, we, you know, that can really stop that. So we did, in the landscaping, add a berm up on top. Again, you can sort of see it in the, in the current photo where it, it does help. And it, and I've noticed in all the rain that we've had, it definitely pushes it down Croton Avenue towards the drain. So just one, one other piece of things that we added.
Any questions?
How high is the berm? Is it reflected on the, on the revised, on the topos here on the, on the plan that we're looking at?
No, I mean, it's just, we can't really, because it's actually in the right-of-way. So I had originally thought maybe, you know, there's actually a row of rocks here. I had hoped that we could bring them forward. It's in the town right-of-way, so we can't do that. So it was basically just a buildup of the earth and the grass put over it. On the Surf Lane side, there's actually a rolled asphalt berm. And Stan and I talked about talking to Mount Kisco to see if it would be possible for Mount Kisco to add that along, you know, as part of their road. But in the meantime, the grassy berm seems to be helping.
Okay. All right. Sabrina, do you have some comments?
Sure. Again, this is a type-two action in accordance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act, so no further action is required to be taken by your board. The project is completely zoning compliant, so there's no issues. Just noting that there was a front yard variance granted back in January of two thousand twenty-two for the properties, but everything is in compliancing with that variance. And then, you know, it's a matter of deferring to Dennis regarding, you know, planting mitigation, that type of thing. So there's really no other issues from my perspective regarding the project. It will, it will need to go to public hearing like the last application and it's up to your board as to how you want to handle it.
Okay, very good. Before we go to Dennis, Bob, are you satisfied with the new drainage that's been put in place? We understand that it's been stabilized, but have they taken steps and is there a drainage program set up so that we will avoid another, hopefully another repeat problem?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. I looked at the drainage plan. I think it's a very well-thought-out plan to convey the drainage and divert it away from the downstream house of Five Surf Lane and also keep it away from the septic as well. And also the berm up on top will help immensely to keep that water coming off the roadway onto their property. So I did look at the drainage plan and I think it's a big help and a big positive influence over what was there before. So I do agree with it and I think it will help substantially.
Good. Okay. Dennis, you have some thoughts?
Hello, thank you, yes. So again, I, I thought it was relevant to go through an aerial history. I, I know, obviously, Mary provided sort of the before and after. And, you know, even from standing at the property, you know, when you look at those previous photos, e- even the trees that are now missing, presuming that their tree species, they do seem to be a, a little on the, on, on the smaller side. So I really was hit with, you know, more of a, the area that sort of serves as what was left, not disturbed within the clearing and grading limit line. So if you were looking through those shrubs onto Surf Lane, it's a dense, mature, established, you know, hedgerow with some, some wildflower species actually, you know, popping out, which was nice in the fall. So i- in terms of their plan and concept, I, I, I was okay with an emphasis on, on the shrub restoration component. I just wanted to sort of weave in a little bit more, you know, why I mentioned about seed mixes and, and wildflowers, because, you know, to maybe move away from the tendency to create or have an area continue to be maintained as that turf cover, because I know they needed to plant to, to stabilize. I, I know people use the term no-mo. I, I think that's a little strong, because you really, to me, that almost implies sometimes you walk away and that's not what we're looking for here. But I think you could have, you know, good shrub, wildflower mix. The only, the only comment that I'll have, which I generated this memo prior to having a conversation with Bob, was that he mentioned that, you know, they never really quantified what the, you know, area of disturbance was with respect to clearing and grading limit line. So having been told that, my only comment would be, again, I'm fine with the concept generally, again, in terms of shrubs and an herb understory, but, you know, it may, may warrant additional area, expanding of the area to, to include that if, if there's going to be a true, you know, restoration of, of the area and not just a stabilization of the area. I think the applicant is proposed to remove just from being at the site and seeing the ribbons. There's the three trees that are, they're, they're past meeting the definition of dead according to one twenty-one dash two, and I can understand why they need to be removed. But, you know, upon their removal, you know, it's going to create some pockets. So I thought there was opportunity, you know, just to infill some shrubs and sort of continue that line in there as well. So, so that was just my general comment, exactly, you know, what the, what, what the level of, of disturbance was in terms of area and then, you know, how the, how the plan sort of restores that and to what degree quantitatively.
So, so have you, that with Miss Scott and, and talked about this and the thoughts in terms of where we would put these plants, et cetera?
Well, I mean, just, and Dennis, just to clarify, are you talking about more plants this way or where?
Yeah, Mary, Mary, so right, sort of above your cursor. So, so just to, you know, it's funny because after, after Bob mentioned, you know, trying to look at how much of the, how much of a disturbance was made and quantifying it, I actually spent an entire day, we, we moved here in two thousand, going through photos to, to see if we had anything and, and honestly, did not find any photographs from that side of the house. It was really a quagmire and not an area that, you, you know, we really did much in. And over the years, the, the, there's basically trees below that clearing line. There was just a lot of ash trees and stuff. So year over, year after year, the ash trees were dying. I guess there was an elm disease on another one and that's really what's happened. We've never taken down live species that are healthy. I would never do that. So, so it kind of cleared a little bit that way. And then there is the, the, the site easement, which is all turf. So it, that's, that's kind of, yeah, and that, that turf just kind of goes right into underneath the, the trees. So that's how it's been for probably, I don't know, fifteen years or so. So, so really, I thought that, you know, just planting, planting some maples around there and if we take those other three down, planting another tree or something to fill it for sure. The last thing I want is to have a giant fairway. That was never our intent. It was, you know, it happened from, from the construction site. So there wasn't really anything beyond that. And, and during that, that, that road, it was really the area that Mary showed of the road coming down was, was what was really cleared. And it was, it was, it was some privet, some brinthea, there was a tree at heaven. It was, and it was a quagmire of stuff, of just, you know, things that were kind of in there. There was, there really wasn't like a big thick forest that was, that was done. And some of the photographs are also kind of deceiving Dennis. There, there were other plants closer to the property, which created these, these views or vantage points that made it look like it was much thicker. But once the Surf Lane development was created and the subdivision, they cut a ton of trees down, so it, it really kind of cleared out.
Right, no, I mean, I agree, you're, that, that easement, I mean, you could see it. You know, I thought it was funny. I thought it was relevant when I found the aerial photo, which I guess went. You know, I thought it was funny. I thought it was relevant when I found the aerial photo, which I guess went all the way. I mean, you could see the orange construction fencing in the earliest photo that I provided, the earliest aerial. So you could tell that was the area as it was being developed. And right to your point, I mean, I that easement was fairly noticeable. It's like, right, you got to keep this, you know, large triangular area, you know, mowed, obviously, for for safety. You know, I'm just, I was just, you know, responding to to Bob's potential increase in quantification. And my response to that was, okay, if if it's necessary, if it shows an increase in quantification, I am fine with the concept that was submitted. I'm not looking to, you know, again, from what I saw, and I think I was trying to emphasize that in my memo, I'm not into quote unquote reforestation in terms of, you know, looking to, you know, put a bunch of trees back. I agree for what you have. The dead ones that you have now look like to be ash and elm. And, you know, that's that supports your your observations and, you know, your experience with the property over time. It's just that, you know, as a result of that disturbance that, you know, unfortunately occurred, and then as a result of the rapid stabilization that, you know, what was required, it's almost turning that, you know, turning that faucet off just a little bit. That's kind of where I'm I'm going with them. That's why I was looking towards the, you know, the seed mix. And I'm glad that you're doing herb plantings in the back. So that's kind of what I was, you know, trying to promote.
And again, even that area in the back where we created that mix to to create that threshold was to help mitigate some of the water. But I also feel that this, there's no way this will stop, you know, another torrential flood coming down High Ridge, you know, I need a curb then or some sort of drainage there because there's there's nothing I can do or has ever happened before. The property below us has always gotten water. It's just a natural flow. What really happened that day was it was the mud that was horrendous because they just, you know, everything was just was just seeded. So it made it worse. But I, whatever we put in there, and I'm happy to fill in, you know, with the with the with all sort of native plants and do the right thing. But there's no way we're going to be able to stop you know, water coming off of High Ridge. And you can see the topical photo here, just that that force of nature is going to, this is not going to do it.
I don't I don't disagree with that statement. I'm just thinking of, you know, I agree that it's mostly privet, but we have a in terms of assemblage, like a nice dense shrub, almost thicket. And I was just thinking of, you know, you were proposing native plantings to sort of connect to that. And I'm like, that's a nice continuation. That's, you know, sort of a value add. So so that was my emphasis. I agree, you know, the next hurricane that comes around, you know, I don't care if it's a shrub or a tree or whatever. Yeah, the water is going to do what it's going to do. I don't I don't deny that. I was thinking more just in ecological terms. That's all.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. And that was our intent, right, was to was basically to replace privet and all that stuff with with more native species. So we used the black haw, which grow 12 to 15 feet. The other question you had asked, Dennis, was the the size of the plants. So I went back to our landscape designer. The maples are two inch caliper, so eight to 10 feet. And then the she said that all the other plants are basically three gallon. So the black haw could be about three feet or so. And she said, there's a lot of variance there, but they, again, they will grow really fast to 12 to 15 feet. The other ones, the spice bush also about three feet. The other ones are two feet at plan. So they're all three gallon plants that we're going to, we were going to kind of put in. But I was I was assured they'll grow quickly. And if you look at that, the sketch and the diagram, it does sort of continue that that natural flow across.
Right. Those are all the minimum sizes that we require. So that would be fine.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for anyone? Questions?
Yeah, I'm a little, a little bit confused. Maybe I'm a lot confused. But I understand the site easement, which is necessary for the intersection of Surf Lane and Proton Avenue. I think that's indicated on the drawing. I don't know. Title on this drawing, but it's indicated on the drawing. And then there's the the grading and clearing limit line, which is essentially this area that it looks like, what Dennis, you mentioned to somebody, maybe the applicant tell me, you're putting down some seeding. We're talking about, are we talking about grasses, meadow grasses? What seeding are we talking about?
Are you asking Dennis? I'm sorry.
Whoever, whoever, Dennis, maybe you you can answer it.
Sure. I sort of just to add to what, you know, was proposed with respect, I guess, to the to the carrots in the back and then looking at the the conditions of the existing, you know, dense thicket there. I was suggesting more, you know, I guess pollinator friendly, but native grasses would would work too. I was just looking for just another layer, component of the of the strata. So that's why I, you know, just didn't want it to appear as shrubs, mulch, and lawn, you know, that's what I was kind of going with.
So that that's within the grading, grading and clearing limit line area, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's essentially meadow grasses, correct?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Okay, so. Okay, that's fine. So does that mean that these are going to get going to get mowed periodically? Or what happens here?
Well, with the with the infill of the areas in and around the shrubs, I think those would be difficult to mow. And that was kind of the point. If there's going to be areas that are going to be maintained as lawn up to that or areas that, you know, were just going to be periodically mowed, no mow, whatever you want to call it, I still felt that, you know, depending on the width and length of the shrub area, I was looking for infill. That's that's the word I would use, you know.
Okay, so.
Can I say something?
I'm sorry. Let me just follow this line of questioning just before I lose it. So the consequences of this of this of this proposal is that we'll be putting in, or they will be putting in a meadow grass mix of some kind that will not be mowed. It will it will essentially, over time, return to nature. So there would be quite naturally some, you know, I'm not going to mow it. Eventually, you're going to get hardwoods in there. You're going to get, you know, you're going to get bushes, and then you're going to get plants. You're going to get larger plants and trees. And it it quite naturally would return to a more forested condition. Is that the is that the eventual intent without actually requiring the applicant to restore it to a forest?
I was more from the respective woody plantings, I was more in in shrubs. That's that's kind of where I was where I was at. I don't know. From looking at the existing area, you know, that that private land's been there undisturbed for 20 something years. I think there was maybe one tree that, you know, established in there. So I was just going with kind of what the site is is now. I know that there's that tree area in the front, but it's a lot of Norway maple. I think there's a tree of heaven in there. So I wasn't really looking to promote promote that.
But Dennis, let me just, you say that this area has been undisturbed for 20, 30 years, but it must have been mowed. I mean, otherwise, there would be, you know, woody plants there, there'd be trees there would be, you know, be invasors there. So it must be having been maintained.
Well, I this corridor, I think to other side of the previous photo, obviously where the easement is, and it looks like to the back of the photo, looking through the the lower part of the growth, I would say where the stop ahead sign is, yeah, it looks like that there's mowing behind that. So my, and I think the plan starts to try to promote that, which looking to sort of restore to what you see in that in that previous photo. I mean, I guess I guess you could get, you know, and they are proposing to plant a couple of trees in the front, but the shrubs were the emphasis.
So I see if I can get to wrap this up. So the grading and clearing limit area, right? The original intention was that it would not be disturbed. I mean, that's the whole point of a grading clearing limit area, other than, you know, you go and take takeouts of the bases. Over the years, that hasn't been honored. It's been, you know, it's been mowed. It's been cleared every once in a while. And that's a condition we have now. And so the, I understand the putting in the bushes and two trees that are proposed here as part of, you know, dealing with that. And so the the other action, which is to put in meadow, I'm just calling a meadow grass mix for a moment here, a natural meadow grass mix is is also, I guess, a way to try and restore it back to nature. And the only question I'm asking is, is it the, would it be the consequence of that action that ultimately this area that is just going to receive, in the grading clearing limit line area, was just going to receive meadow grass is ultimately going to return to eventually woody woody plants, saplings, so on and so forth, that are come back and grow there and essentially end up restored back to a natural forest condition? Is that a yes or a no? What do we intend? It's not the point. It's what would be the consequences of it?
Right. So in in terms of succession?
Yes.
May maybe eventually. But, you know, again, for whatever reason, this specific site, you know, which is why I think I included in the memo just sort of what was the existing conditions of that, you know, shrub thicket area. And maybe that is because of pressure on both sides of it being being mowed. You know, obviously for the easement as well as, you know, property owners that are around it. I, you know, I think it has a better chance, you know, forming, you know, sort of that that dense shrub. And yeah, I guess some trees, you know, potentially would, you know, look to, you know, rise out of there eventually as as well. I mean, that's kind of the progression of, you know, at least my time spending in, you know, areas of upstate New York, which were, you know, formerly agriculture. I mean, once you get past the plowed field, it's a nice open meadow. And, you know, when you start moving towards where they were, you know, having their planting areas, you would get to like these shrub shrub lines where obviously, you know, the farmers decided that was going to sort of be their demarcation to either not plant beyond that or plant something else elsewhere. They almost went with sort of that natural thicket succession to establish their hedgerows. And then further in the distance where they didn't touch anything for 50 years, that was where your your forests were. So presumably that would eventually return to that, but not exactly because there was some disturbance in.
The forest we live in now, in a period of time in our past of not too recent history, but this used to be orchard. This used to be farmland, and we're located in second or third growth growth forest that we live in. And that's essentially agricultural land that has been left to go fallow and abandoned, and it comes back to forest. And that's that's where we live right now. And so I guess the reason I'm asking this is that before when this plan was done and the grading and clearing limit line was put in place, a subdivision was done, I'm guessing that there was forest here, right? And this is done, the subdivision was done back when?
2000.
So the the intent, I think, of the creating current limit line was to have a natural undisturbed area, which would in our forest we live in, would be a forest. And instead of requiring this applicant to restore it to forest, we are instead taking a strategy that says, you don't have to do that. Just leave it alone, and it will eventually get there. And I'm just trying to come up with a rationalization why we should approve them not not essentially restoring this back to a forest. So I think I'm getting there. But I just wanted to make it clear because I'm not sure that we would normally just let this go. And I'm not, I understand the applicant isn't responsible for the clearing, but that's, I mean, that's, I'm not sure that we should necessarily be taking that into account. I mean, there needs to be some restoration. And if restoration by, what's the term you used, succession is the way to do it, then that's great. But we ought to be absolutely sure that succession is allowed to take place and that this area not be mowed and to be left alone.
Can I add to that?
Yes.
That all makes perfect sense to me. I think there's a piece of this conversation that we haven't had yet, which is, there was a clearing and grading limit line in place here. That clearing and grading limit line was violated or whatever the proper term is. And that's okay, I guess, or it's not okay. But sometimes people say better to ask for forgiveness than permission. Permission wasn't asked for. I'm actually not hearing much forgiveness being requested either. And we wouldn't be here but for a heavy rain on May 27. And so whether it was done on purpose or not, like you got caught, right? And that's why we're having this discussion. And I think, you know, unlike the previous application that came before us, the question was, you know, they were looking prospectively. We'd like to take some trees down in the clearing and grading limit line with a purpose, asking for permission. And there was a, you know, the, you know, from our perspective, we discussed what the appropriate offset was. Here, I agree with you. We need to discuss what is the appropriate offset. And also, we sort of have a an answer as to sort of what's the worst case scenario. It happened on May 27. Right? There was a very heavy rain. Now, I don't remember that rain, but but, you know, we have heavy rains every now and then. And so historically, there was, you know, there is a purpose to grading, clearing and grading limit lines. And I feel like we should be a little bit more proactive when it comes to thinking, how do we restore this clearing and grading limit line to its original intent? And so how to do that, to your point, Tom, is is the question from my perspective. I don't know the answer. That is not my area of expertise at all. But but it is a, it is an important question. And so obviously, it is Dennis's area of expertise. And so I defer to him. But I do think that the context here, the history is important. And that needs to go into the consideration of what is the appropriate next step.
You know, and just to just to round that out a little bit, this is not the first time, the only time this has happened, right? I mean, this, these, these, I don't call violations because people don't necessarily understand and know that such a thing is, you know, such a restriction is on their property. Be that as it may, these things happen all the time. We see applications all the time where it's discovered that there's been this problem. And I just, I want to be careful about saying, well, in this particular case, we're just going to go ahead and spread some grasses in, and we're going to wait 20 years to get the, you know, to get the forest back. So I think, which gets to your point, should we be more progressive, aggressive, progressive in terms of trying to do more, put more trees in or other more shrubs or whatever?
Yeah, because it's not a hypothetical, right? And there was a heavy rain, and there was significant damage because there wasn't sufficient plant in here, right?
It's a drainage issue, right?
Can I can I interject just out of curiosity? Because the only clarification I would need is, and I don't have what this, the composition of, let's say, the quote unquote forest of 20 years ago, I was just looking at, you know, the present day conditions and, you know, the shrubs that that are there. They were not planted recently. They've they've had a chance to grow and thicken and, you know, really form a dense area. If an area was was forested and it was represented by, you know, ash and elm trees, which, you know, over time, you know, didn't do so well. And then someone in this case does, you know, give an oops and, you know, violates the clearing and grading limit line, is is the restoration of what has now transitioned to, it probably wasn't all treed because a number of those trees were dead, but we have what we do have, and that's kind of what I was going off of. But we have, what we do have, and that's kind of what I was going off of. It's kind of like the horse whisperer, but it's what the vegetation tells you. You know, I'm, I'm seeing, you know, the tree area to the left of the previous photo, which includes some dead trees, it, it includes a number of, you know, invasives. And I was, you know, looking at the, the, the shrub line and I said, you know, gee, this seems to be doing more in terms of, you know, its formation, its density, its allowing of, you know, three native species of wildflowers to actually come through that I'm sure, you know, were naturally recruited. I'm like, for this site, this to me made more sense in terms of a restoration approach. I don't know what it was 20 years ago, I was just assessing at, at, at this time.
So I'm looking at the photographs that, um, there's no page number here, but that have the proposed planting with the, uh, uh, house on the right and the existing hedge on the left and then the trees behind, right? If you look at everything to the left of that hedge, and the hedge is, the reason the hedge is there, I mean, I, I think you said that there were invasives in there, it looked like invasives to me.
They're all invasive.
Right, okay, so they're all invasive, so that's something that you take out. But everything that you should take out, everything to the left of that hedge, it looks to me are trees and woody, woody plants. And the only reason that those aren't there now in the growing, clearing and grading limit line, because they're growing naturally, right? Is because this property has been maintained, it's been mowed, et cetera, et cetera, it's been repeatedly cleared. And so the conclusion I would have, even though it may be a supposition that, gee, you know, 30 years ago, this used to be a forest and I don't, we don't have any evidence of that, but the evidence that it would be a forest now is in the photograph. So, uh, again, to, I think to, to Eldas' point, I don't know what the answer is in terms of how to, what to ask for. Dennis, you can help us here. I think drainage is, is, is one of the issues that needs to be dealt with in this regard. And maybe just the, the meadow grasses will take care of that because root systems tend to be pretty dense and, and they, they hold a lot of water. But with regard to the rest of it, habitats, so on and so forth, I, I just, I, I just think that it's, that it's inaccurate to, to suggest that, well, this meadow grass is a natural condition here. Because there's no evidence in the photograph that's the case.
Can I ask a good question?
Sure, please.
Dennis, um, in terms of meadow grass, I mean, because we do have this sightline we have to keep. I mean, would you bring meadow grass out to the edge here?
No, I'm not, I, 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 the easement, there's no, there's, there's, it's not a requirement. I don't think I can make it a requirement because that has to be maintained. I was just trying to, um, you know, mimic the composition of, of the area of shrubs that wasn't disturbed. And, you know, they did have, uh, you know, a, a bit of an herb, you know, component and understory. So I was just trying to promote that with respect to your plan where the shrubs were placed, you know, close to where you're proposing the red maples, um, so.
So just in terms of the, the site plan, are you saying, because I'm, I'm just not understanding, like, would the meadow grasses be over here, would they be kind of mixed into here? Because, so here's our, you know, our.
For me, right, it would, I mean, I, I, I keep using the term infill. I mean, it's almost like, you know, when you're, when you're done.
In with the, with the shrubs.
That's the seed that you would apply. This way it doesn't, you know, depending on the spacing of the shrubs and whatnot, I, I wasn't looking for the continuation of probably the species of grass that were used to stabilize the property that would look to, you know, infill those areas. Kind of what's happening, if you look at the proposed photo, um, at the bottom, kind of what's happening in that assemblage of the trees, that's to the left of the proposed red maple. That's what I was looking to, to prevent.
Very interesting.
Gap, the gap that we're looking at with the pictures where the house is showing, where you've got the maples placed, is that the gap, is that, was that the construction roadway, the temporary construction roadway going out to? Pardon?
So this is the addition? So the roadway went, you know, not on the circling side, on the Croton Avenue side here.
Yeah.
My, my thought on this, if I might, is that clearing and grading limit lines were really construction lines in the past. And we've sort of manipulated it to be more, um, I guess, more green or whatever. And I, I think that anything that's planted that will increase habitat in the area for other critters, then I think that's really, really safe. It's, uh, Tom does bring up a good point as to, well, if you're gonna have it all natural, then why would you mow the grass? You would, you would try and have natural grass come in, and I, and I agree with that. But I'm certainly feeling that, that the more trees and bushes, the better. Uh, the mowing of the grass is a separate issue. That might be something we have to really look at hard. But we've done this in a few other places where we put in vegetation with the, the specific goal to create more of a pathway for other animals to move and, and, you know, find food and water and everything else, so.
So I guess I would, just to try and conclude this, um, there, there's, for me, it's, uh, in addition to, to being a drainage question, it's a habitat question. And there are a couple of parks in town, I, I go to, not, this isn't our town. I go to Kitchwan a lot, and there are a couple of high meadows there that are mowed. And they do a great job, they mow pathways through them, and then they mow the meadows themselves annually. And it's just spectacular. And I know that the Meyer Preserve, I've been there, Bob is very familiar with this one because he is one of the caretakers of that, um, park. And there are some magnificent series of meadows and that that are just beautiful that have to be among the richest habitats in town. And so I'm not necessarily against a meadow environment, I guess, now that I think about it, as a habitat, um, uh, area that could be the justification for meadows integrating and clearing limit line. I, I think that that's not necessarily unreasonable. I think that there should be some conditions that are put on it that are very specific. I don't know how to monitor these things, I know the town doesn't really do that very aggressively. So it would be a matter of trust. But if there's a way to, and maybe the shrubs that are being suggested here, uh, if there's a way to delineate the, the boundary between the, um, the, the boundary of the clearing, grading limit lines, so that it, nobody's gonna go back there, they won't go back there and clear it, they'll pretty much leave it alone and, and it gets mowed, you know, every, you know, every six months or every year, Bob would know a lot about that. Then maybe, you know, maybe I'm okay with that. The other strategy is to go, go ahead and ask for more trees and put trees in that are going to be delivering saplings over time uh, to sort of push the succession. Not completely forested, but put the kinds of, a few different species in that are natural to the area and let that happen. So there are two options here, you know, one is a meadow, uh, environment, and then another is a forest environment. And I, I think if we can decide whether we care which it is, it would be a big step. Uh, if we don't, then let the applicant and Dennis, you know, decide what to do here. But if we do care about it, we ought to see if we can come to a conclusion about that and give some direction.
A special feature here is that there is egregious runoff that occurs compared to many other sites because of the terrain. And so insofar as, um, planting were to, uh, mollify the, the rush of water um, before it gets to the leveling area, that would be good too. So that would, that's special in my mind. You know, the amount of water that I'm hearing has, uh, visited the site. Uh, so that, I think there's some opportunities to naturally, uh, without a lot of work, get, you know, get, uh, better conditioning. Because I can't imagine that grass that's cut every, uh, you know, every week or every week and a half, that it's gonna stop as much water as would, you know, some higher. Different grasses that would grow up and use more water and protect the, the, the amount that goes down the hill.
So you, you, you know, the, the meadow, properly maintained meadow environment around here, you get, I mean, you get, you know, natural bee bomb, you get, uh, goldenrod, you get some wonderful, wonderful pollinators that, that come up. So I think that there's, that would be a reasonable solution. I don't know what the technical sort of protocols are for maintaining such a thing and be sure that it survives, um, you know, properly. But that, that would be acceptable to me. And it sounds like that might be the direction that Dennis was heading in anyway, so, you know, maybe that works. And it's also not punitive to the applicant, asking to put in a whole bunch of trees might be a bit much, given the whole history of this thing. The long history of this thing that this applicant may not be responsible for.
That was my concern, but. So if I could just, just comment in, right, so from my perspective, the only contextual question that I'm looking to answer, and I, this is off of my discussions with Bob, is, you know, is this just the area that was disturbed, which is proposed in the planting? And if that were to widen, um, or increase in size, you know, I think it becomes, what your suggestions are to me make more sense, have more merit and, and value. Because, you know, you're not gonna create like a linear corridor, you know, in between a road and the driveway and not mow it and say, oh, look, it's a meadow, you know? But, but in terms of, you know, if the area, you know, that, that, that bubble starts to, to sort of increase, um, I still would like, you know, some commensurate, uh, you know, increase in shrubs. But yes, I think now it would, you know, I still would want the infill, but now you could also have sort of these open areas that tie into the, into the shrub area. And, you know, it would, you know, I, I mean, I would consider it, you know, to use the term restoration. Because it's not gonna be.
Dennis, so does that mean that we just need another version of this landscape plan to look at with, with your input to it?
Uh, version and the area that is, you know, subject to, uh, the plan.
Great, so are we all on board with this approach?
Yep.
With Dennis's guidance?
Yes.
And I like, I like Dick's idea that, uh, more demarcation of the clearing, grading limit line with the shrubs. Because that will help all of us, uh, in the future. It seems to me that we have it clumped in certain areas. And, um, so I, I really like that idea. And not, you know, just don't make it a row, we don't want, make it look natural. But that should help the demarcation of the clearing, grading limit lines.
Which was kind of the idea of this curve along here. And I mean, Dennis, if you would, if you could meet Mr. Stansky and I at the site and we can talk it through?
I, I think that would be great.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and, and the intent is to, to kind of fill it, I mean, it might look like, it's certainly not a row. So they're gonna be scattered and there's three layers. So the, the, the Black Hawk, which, which mimics sort of some of the, the Privet and some of the stuff is, it grows 15 feet high, so that is gonna be staggered. And then she had some of the lower stuff, the honeysuckle and the, the New Jersey tea sort of scattered in between to kind of create that. So yeah, there, there, this area will not be mowed. And it is going, we're gonna try to recreate with native species what sort of already exists. And the reason, you, you know, and then the forest area on top, the trees just makes the most sense because of the easement. But happy to work with Dennis on this and, and, and fine tune it to get it to your liking.
So Dennis, in, in the, the planting of the, uh, of the meadow area, maybe we could push this motion of, uh, pollinators, um, a little bit so that, um, you know, we could, we can get the succession to a mature meadow doing what meadows do, um, to go, to, to be a little bit more successful more quickly, rather than just broadcast seeding some meadow grasses.
Okay.
Dennis, are you okay with honeysuckle? Is that not an invasive or is this a different kind of honeysuckle?
Yeah, I, I, I did look that up, uh, yeah, a lot of them are, but this one is not, so.
Okay, thank you.
And, and on mowing, one last thought, uh, it doesn't have to be totally non-mowed. There are, there are some grass species that they, they need to be mowed once, maybe twice a year.
Right.
Okay, so don't want to limit it too much.
If the intent is a meadow, you're gonna have to mow it periodically. I mean, we could go to Glazier and do a case study if you would like, uh, along the Blue Trail.
Right on.
And just in terms of, you know, the site area, is there a limit to the height that, you know, just in terms of town code or whatever? Is that, you know, is that mowed to regular grass level? Is that allowed to be a certain height? How does that work?
Excuse me, can I say one thing, Mary? Just regarding the site distance area, you don't plan on putting anything in the site easement area, do you? Okay.
No, that's gonna stay up.
Oh, no, I just needed, just need a clarification on that, thank you.
Right, but is, is that meant to stay as grass the way it is now and mowed in regular way? So that it's low grass?
Yeah.
The site distance? Yes, the site area, no doubt.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
That's gotta be stayed low, that's there for safety. That was, I was here when they put that roadway in, that was very heavily vegetated with trees and everything. And they cleared all that out for that specific reason, because there is a lot of traffic along that road. So that's gotta maintain to be grass, yes.
Okay. That's good.
Okay, what we can do is, uh, if you can get this scheduled and out in the field, perhaps, um, we can schedule tentatively a, uh, we have it on the scoreboard here. The, uh, a public hearing, say the first meeting in December, so we can have new material together. Uh, what is the cutoff for that, Felicia?
December sixth, cutoff is November fourteenth.
So November fourteenth, so two weeks from now, we could have, uh, the revised planting plan and you guys meeting in the field. If that's okay, we'll, we'll, we'll schedule a public hearing. I guess we'll get a request a motion.
Sounds good.
Okay. Uh, and then depending upon, uh, the degree to which, uh, staff is satisfied with, uh, the plans, we may even, you know, at some, maybe the next meeting if we hear back, direct the staff to put together a resolution for you.
Mr. Chairman, if you're interested in doing a resolution, we can, you should direct that resolution to be prepared now pending, uh, confirmation from the environmental coordinator that a plan has been agreed to, rather than.
If you think we have enough material and, and are going to be, uh, you know, additional changes that are gonna cause us, uh, you know, more work on the resolution, we could certainly do that.
And, and it's a draft resolution, so it doesn't, you know, you don't have to even consider it.
Okay, I, I, I would like to do that.
Yeah.
Help, help the applicant along, move this along.
Absolutely.
So is there a motion to direct staff to, uh, draft a resolution and to schedule a public hearing for December sixth? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, very good.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. So we're going now to our next item, this is our discussion item. Uh, this is the opportunities for public property and check for handlet, uh, continuation of our last discussion on October eighteenth. I guess the town board's starting to, uh, uh, consider, uh, well, Sabrina can fill us in. Uh, you're at the meeting in terms of where, where they are. And then we can start to talk about where we might be, what we're talking about.
Uh, they would like me to, uh, prepare an RFP to obtain a consultant to help with an outreach program and help them define the parameters of that program.
What end?
I'm sorry?
To what end?
To asking the community. To asking the community what they would like to see happen with public property in the Hamlet.
And what is the timing on that?
I committed to giving them a draft in two weeks.
A draft RFP?
A draft RFP.
Um, can I say a couple things?
Absolutely.
Um, number one, I apologize, I meant to, uh, um, have something in writing, uh, a couple days ago to share with, with, uh, the board, um, I started something, I got distracted, and then that was that. So, so I apologize, uh, I intended to have something to, to review and discuss. Um, secondly, um, so I appreciate this, and, um, uh, I'm happy that the, the town board got, uh, something from us in advance. Um, I, I think, uh, the document that I'm looking at here is good, um, I do think that it, 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 um, is still missing sort of a step before, um, because from my perspective, um, the questions surrounding what to do with the town owned land are part of something bigger, right? The town owned land in and of itself, I mean, unless it's not, but from my perspective, the town owned land, the questions surrounding it are intended to spur something that goes beyond just the town owned land. And again, I, I come back to the question of like, well, what is that? And I do think that there needs to be a, a sort of mission statement, uh, that, that is one step before the question of what should we do with, with, with the public land, uh, which then leads to the questions of, well, how do we do those, how do we, what is the process to determining what should we do with the town owned land? And I just think that without that, um, it, it, it sets us to, it will set the town, the town board, the town, um, somewhat, uh, adrift, um, and so, um, I don't know exactly what to do with those, with those thoughts, but that's kind of what, what I was thinking then, and what I still think, that, um, uh, there needs to be a, you know, a, a, a vision, or it would be helpful to have a vision that guides this, the questions that then lead to the process that then leads to the determination of how to handle the town owned land. So, um, I agree. And I, I had thought that it was my intention of to break down the elements of what that vision would be in these bullet points, I mean, some fundamental principles, starting point, which is that, and I think that many of us share this, you, you expressed it the last time we got together, I'm in the long room if we're talking about commercial development.
Exactly.
And so, uh, that's why, yeah, I agree with that, and so these, these bullet points are supposed to be the components of that statement. Putting the parameters of, you know, what is the real reason to be doing this, you know, what, you know, what are we trying to get out of this? They call it a vision statement, I think that term is hackneyed, so I sort of resist using it, because I think for many people it just raises suspicion, oh, here you go, another vision statement, right? Uh, so I don't know quite how to frame all of that, uh, so that it's, uh, accepted. So these were the, the basic, sort of for me anyway, the basic principles that I thought were coming out of the conversations that we were having, which is that it really is a, it's, it's town owned land, and the, the, the best use of that, the purpose of that is, is as a public use, public space with public facilities for the purpose of, uh, the civic purpose of, maybe it's, a lot of this isn't in here, but there really is a civic purpose to it, right? I mean, there's, there's there is a true benefit of bringing citizens together.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Now that's sort of an abstract sort of notion that many people won't understand, but it's fundamentally true, I think, in communities, that, that this is a good thing, this is why we have church communities, you know, this is why we have country clubs, you bring people together, and having a civic space in which that happens, I think is a positive civic community good, and that the town owned land, because we all own it, is the place for that to happen and that to, to promote that. Now, that is sort of, that principle is embedded in here, uh, maybe it needs to be, maybe if it's the right message, it needs to be more explicit in saying that. But I was really looking for, what are the components of that vision, you know, that purpose, and that's what I was trying to do, is to break it down. Wasn't meant to be the statement as much as it was where our statement should embrace.
Yep.
Can, can I ask a, a quick question?
Sure.
Bob, did any of the town board members get back to you regarding this document?
No. I did hear, on the last document that we sent, uh, I did hear from one town board member, uh, who thanked me for sending it, but I haven't heard anything substantive at all, uh, from the last documents. Now, this one was sent today, so it's, you know, pretty short order, so I, I really can't expect to hear back.
Right.
But, um, it would be nice to hear back and, and see, at least part of my, my attempt here was to get the two boards in sync and making sure that we're moving together in the right direction, and I, 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 as you saw in the thing that I sent out this afternoon, which is largely Tom's, uh, work, thank you, uh, Tom, uh, but, you know, remember, there's also this, I, I personally don't agree with it, I think that the town should be moving forward, but there's also this whole sense of, we think there's a sense that we need to be doing something here, but it might be that there is not an overwhelming sense to do much of anything and, and not with the public property. Okay, we'll find out with the outreach, but, you know, I think it's important to have that in the back of our minds, that someone may, people may come back and say, it's perfect the way it is, we don't wanna make any changes, and, uh, and, and I think we should, we need to respect that, I, I personally don't agree with that, but, you know, that's, that's me. But, uh, I, I'm intrigued by your, your comments, Al, that I'm just not quite sure, I, I think there's something that I really agree with and really wanna get from you, but I'm not sure what it is and, and where we can put it in here, so it's, it's, um, I, I, I'm frustrated, because I really, I know there's something there, but I'm not quite sure, I'm capable of, uh, articulating it a, as you can, uh, as you might, maybe you're not either, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I think there's something there, and, uh, because it there's, it's, I don't know if this is really necessarily the starting point, my suspicion is you're saying that there's another point that's really a starting point before this that sort of dovetails with this.
Yes.
And I'm not sure what that is, uh, and I'm really open to trying to find out what that is.
So, so maybe, so is there space, is there time, is there a desire from the town board to hear more from us?
Well, we're gonna tell them anyway, but...
So, 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 uh, you know, I have to tell you, I was quite surprised that I was directed to prepare this RFP tonight, because I thought there was going to be more discussion as to what this should be, and kind of the perspective, much as your board has been doing, um, regarding components of the vision, right? That it's a civic space and not a space for housing and commercial use. Um, you know, I have heard nothing from the town board in regards to the direction that they want this to, to look like, or the vision that they're trying to promote, other than there's been statements like, it's not broken.
So let me just
How can you even make a, come up with an RFP then?
So, no...
Well, I was looking at it, I, in, in listening to you
You can't? I'm, I'm sorry, let me just jump in here, because, um, you, in order to start the process, you can't know what the next, what the answers are to the next questions until you start the process of finding out. And part of the process of finding out is doing a survey, right? We can have all these conversations about what should, should be, shouldn't be, you know, why doesn't somebody decide? You need to get the survey going, it's gonna take a month, at least two months, to find somebody to start the survey. So to wait until we know what we want to do here and how we wanna frame this question and, you know, what the intentions are, civic space versus commercial space versus do nothing, there's a month to figure that out. I mean, we need, I think that they would like to get going on this, and in the meantime, we can be working, they can be working on this other piece of it, which is, what's the overall vision, you know, purpose, whatever, North Star? What's the North Star? That doesn't need to, the hiring somebody doesn't need to wait for that, they aren't mutually exclusive, I mean, they can both happen at the same time, that's my feeling. So it's not necessarily always a sequential process.
Yep.
Right, and we can't be trying to decide before we just start the project, we can't, or the, for the initiative, we don't need to find out what the cost of parking would be, we'll come to that, don't solve problems until they need to be solved, otherwise we'll just never get anywhere.
And I guess, uh, uh, so I
So I think that it's appropriate to ask, I'm sorry, to get to the, the question at hand, it's perfectly appropriate to get this survey going, and then by the time you get somebody engaged, you will be able, they will be able to be more specific about what they are looking for, and they're gonna need help from them, how to frame that, right? That's what these people do. So I, I understand them doing that. I, I'm okay with that, too, I, I just, you know, Bob, you, you made a, a, a good point, and I think we discussed this before, that the answer could be that the vast majority of the respondents to the survey, the engagement, saying, we don't wanna see anything. Right. Um, but there's a reason that the question is being asked, right? And I guess what I'm trying to get to, or some of what I'm trying to get to, is why is the question being asked? It's a leadership question, it's a, it's actually, to my point of view, it's leadership. We have a, a, people have been saying that one of the reasons the whole form-based code came up, and was that whole process we went through, was that people are saying, we want more out of our town, it's just not what we think it could be, right? And that drives, I think that, that, that covers the plan, the form-based code initiative, which happened to be the wrong way to approach it, the, the form-based code initiative, was the energy of the community saying, gee, why can't this be more like this town or that town, why can't we have more in our town? And I think that that's the reason the question is being asked. So That's motivation. Right, so, but does the town board think that, I guess is the question, it, it, that, that there can, that we want more from our downtown? Why do you, why, why do you ask that, why do you doubt them? I don't doubt them, I just haven't heard that from them, and, 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 and what we heard
I haven't heard that from them.
Right, the last time we met with them, in fact, we expli, I explicitly did not hear that, and, and what Sabrina's saying is, the only thing that she's heard is that there isn't a problem, and so unless we're saying periodically, we should just ask the people what they want. Well, why, why, let me ask you, why would the town board wanna even have this conversation if they didn't think that it was something that, that the people wanted to do and they were obligated to pursue it? Why would they even ask it? Why would we have this conversation? I agree with you, and that's, that's exactly my point, that the point I've been trying to, perhaps inartfully trying to get at the last couple, last time we've had this conversation, which is there is a sense that something needs to be done, which is why we'd be asking the question, I'm happy that we, we, we're thinking about asking these questions. So what, what are you, where are you going with this? I need a, I need a period with an explanation for it. Yes, yeah, yeah, okay, well, um... I mean, go on, but just give me, give me something. Yes, um, so what I would love is ultimately for the town board to say, we think that the downtown needs X, Y, and Z. That's what we are trying to help them do. Yeah, agree, agree, I would love to figure out a way to better help them, uh, so, but we, this is what I'd love to see, the town board saying, we think the downtown needs X, Y, and Z, or can be these things, whatever, how, whatever they are. We think that in order to achieve that, we should consider better utilization, different utilization of the town owned land, and therefore, and, you know, in, in, in service of this, you know, bigger goal of improvement of, you know, and, and improvement of the downtown, improvement that's defined in, in a little bit better terms than just better, um, we would like to engage the public in a process. So, yeah, and so I think that they they reckon, I think they recognize that in, before they go too much further down the road, they need to have that in place, and it's one of the things we've been talking, the very first thing I wrote, I said, number one, policy affirmation, right? Yes. What is it that you are promoting, you know, what is it that, that is driving this thing? I agree, they haven't done that yet, to our satisfaction, maybe your satisfaction, certainly not to mine.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean that it's not on their, their list of things to do, it doesn't mean they're not talking about it, they actually brought on Victoria, I think, because the one who, a number of meetings ago, said, when the first conversation came up about the meeting I happened to sit in, where they asked, um, Sabrina to do an RFP for a charrette, Victoria said, well, gee, before we get too far down the road, let's figure out why we're doing this. Right, yep. And that was like months ago, so it, it, and they haven't done it yet, um, and I thought that our contribution was to prompt that, to help them, not just to prompt them, it's up to them to decide when they're gonna do whatever they're gonna do.
Right.
But to contribute to that, to that particular conversation as a first step. Yes, so we're, we're on the same page, you know, I guess what, what, you know, what, what I add to that is I, I would like to see, um, sort of the thought that the, whatever is decided about the town owned land, that is just a portion of the downtown, and a portion of the steps towards achieving what I would hope to see is an overarching goal, goals or point of view, um, for the downtown, and then as a result, the town as a whole. And, um, that's where I think that we can additionally be helpful, um, all, all, saying this all because I, I do think that we ha, and, and I said this last time, I think that we have to recognize that there is no, um, neutral, let's just see what people want, like, to, to what end, right? I mean, it, 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 it's not, it, it may seem like a neutral question, but I don't think it is, and that's fine, I, in fact, I prefer there to be that point of view, I want X, I want Y, how do we get there, what are the appropriate steps, how do we engage the right people to get there, um, so that we're doing it in a way that, that is, you know, inclusive and, 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 um, comprehensive and all that, uh, so, so that's, I know those are a lot of words, a lot of, most of them are very vague, and, and, um, perhaps the reason that I got distracted and come back to what I was writing is that I was having trouble articulating it, um, but, uh, I, I, I think we can be helpful in that regard, I don't disagree, Tom, that it, it doesn't, the, the drafting of the RFP doesn't have to wait, because there's a lot more work to be done in parallel and with a potential consultant and with the town board, I just, I'm curious if this is all like, um, you know, a tree falls in the forest, like, does, does the town board, you know, to what extent do they want to hear from us, and maybe it doesn't matter if they're gonna hear from us regardless, but, but I, I think we can be helpful.
Regardless.
Yeah.
And I think they do, frankly, and I, and I agree with, uh, what you guys have said. I, I think, right or wrong, uh, this town board has, um, you know, we saw this even with the last town board, they started to peel the town Hamlet apart. Now, this all started, we did the, uh, the whole EIS for the entire town, and then all of a sudden it went to just North Greeley. Then now North Greeley, I don't know what's going on with North Greeley, but, uh, then there's some other ideas about, you know, putting some apartments in on, on slopes on, on, um, King Street, and then I've heard some other ideas about permitting zoning changes, have people build, you know, apartments, accessory apartments in, in the Hamlet to get more housing, this is terrific, but now we're also looking at the, the, the public property, to your point, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna use the word segment, because it's a very nasty word, but it really has been broken down now, we had assembled it with the EIS, and now it's been kind of taken apart, so I think we, um, and that's fine, that's what they wanna do, but I think we should keep that, we, as, as the disciplined planner should keep that in mind, and make certain that we leave avenues to reassemble this all back together again, so that you don't end up with some sort of uncoordinated mishmash, so I think that's really important, I So I think that's really important. I, you know, right, wrong, or in between, that's what's happened. But I think that's a very good point. We have to be really cognizant of that because what you do here with the public property obviously is going to impact, I said it last time, that, that dopey expression, what was it? The energy or electricity or something? And that's what I meant.
Attractive energy.
Yeah. I should really claim that because that really is, that really says it all. But the idea was that when you do something here with the public property, you're going to spur other, other consequences, other results.
Yes, yes.
And right, wrong, or in between, we need to understand what those might be and to the extent we want to steer it.
I think that that's an excellent point, not just from planning policy, but also physical planning. Because what you, how you do whatever you do on the town-owned land is going to, if, if it ends up being a big initiative, it's gonna have a big physical impact and it needs to be done in a way that contributes rather than detracts. Because you have good planning, bad planning, good design, bad. So I think all those things are true, but, but when it comes to the, to the carve-out, one of the things that we recommended when we looked at form-based code was take the town-owned land out of it.
Well, I think we did that because of, oh frankly, I thought we did that for politics and maybe to get some sort of sensible conversation.
Well, yeah, but, but they were all good reasons to study and I think they still apply. And I think part of it was a feeling, for me anyway, it was not just a feeling, it was a determination that you should not use town-owned land for commercial development.
Right.
And this form-based code, that's all it is, is commercial development, so.
Have the streets in there, remember?
Yeah, so just take it out. And so I think that that was probably a good move because I think it, I'm not saying that that got us to where we are here today, but we are here today, where we are is a good place to be, I think.
Well, I don't think it's good, bad, or different. I, I think it's very important that we all just make it neutral. So it doesn't have a good, you know, a bad impact on, on, on most of the town. And again.
Well, I think it's.
Kind of coordinate this. I mean, so against Sabrina, this is really something that, you know, I guess you guys will need to marshal in, in staff, is to try to steer this and coordinate this, these initiatives so that, you know, we have some people doing something on housing and, and what does that all mean? And then the public property, then North Greeley, we have applications coming in. And, and I guess, and coordinate those.
So, yeah, I, I, and part of the, I think the frustration and had lots of frustrations working with the town board, not because of the people on it, but because of the way they're structured, the way they have to be business, right? They aren't a corporate board where you come, you come together and that person is that responsible and if you're not doing your job, you know, you're fired, all those things. You have a program and you have to mean it otherwise. You know, the whole thing collapses. This is a different animal completely, so I get frustrated because there are certain things that I think are important, right? And I would like to see them move more quickly on and be more deliberate about. But they have a lot of things that they need to move quickly on and be deliberate about, so these things sort of tend to like, you know, float and surface whenever they happen to surface based on what their particular agendas are and their particular schedule is. And that's why, that's the frustration, I think, that maybe your feeling, I, I'm a little concerned that's gonna happen with this one.
Right.
And it's my feeling that this is like, my personal feeling, this is like a moment in time here where you have, I think, I think, a town board which is constituted to do something about this. A moment in time when the people are alert because of the form-based quote controversy. I mean, you could put this out there and people would be paying attention, right? Uh-oh, their first response would be, uh-oh, here we go again. Which is, it's okay, it'll get their attention. And if you don't get this thing going now, in a year from now, two years from now, you'll have to start over because there'll be another town board and it will be, you will have missed, I think you'll miss your moment. So my frustration is maybe partly yours, they don't seem to be necessarily paying the kind of aggressive attention to it that we would hope. And I think that, I don't think that that's intentional. I just think, well, they're going through an election right now and they've had some, some discussions in town about certain things that they need to be really paying attention to. And then I think get back to this business, this part of their business, I think, sooner rather than later. But I do think that they have asked us to contribute.
Yes, absolutely.
And when you said things are appreciative, or you have heard from one of them.
Yeah, I, I could probably get appreciation. And I think, you know, actually to your point, the fact that they're moving ahead with the RFP is actually a good, a very good sign then. Again, giving, unfortunately for Sabrina, just a two-week turnaround is, oh well.
I just think that.
So if we're waiting, if you're, I, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say is that if one is waiting for them to take a particular kind of aggressive leadership on this, right? Don't expect too much. And it's not from their lack of will, their lack of care, it's just from the way these, these organizations, you know, operate.
Right.
And so we ought to be, if we have the opportunity and asked to, we ought to be.
We can be the engine behind the scenes, a hun, a hundred percent. You know, I, I guess, absent this step before that I'm talking about, the somewhat bigger picture mission statement, point of view, North Star, that is bigger than the town-owned land, absent that, will be put in a position, I think, of trying to solve everything with just the town-owned land. And, and then there might be someone say, well, we, we need housing, right? And so, so let's use it for housing, or we need more stores or, or we need, you know, I, I guess my point is that the town-owned land is part of a, of something bigger and if we're able to define that, the, the certain goal for the bigger thing, it'll give us some clarity as to how to address the town-owned land piece of it. And, and, and Bob, I mean, maybe you said it, you said it, not me, you said it in a way that maybe Thomas says to me, which is, we can think about North Greeley or, or, or the hill of King Street or the town-owned land or just the parking situation, but from a planning policy, from a physical planning perspective, we'd be foolish to not realize that each one of these impacts the others. And so, you know, but ultimately, I mean, we're talking ourselves into a comprehensive plan.
Bringing the whole thing.
Yes, I, I, I just, I, I mean, I, I hear myself, right? And, and I hear what we're saying, but, you know, this is the planning board.
But I guess, yeah, and I guess.
Yeah, right. We think about big plans.
And I guess, it would pay justly for what we're talking about.
For our worth, I guess, time and a half or overtime, right?
You know, if they'd paid you more, I'd actually talk less.
But I think what was very interesting this time around was when Tom actually, you know, got some touchstones out of the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
And the comprehensive plan is a little bit looser than some of the stuff that we heard when the plan was being put together, when people came down and, and met in these sessions. But I think by, I, I think that was really important and I think it's really helpful to us when we give that, when we give this document, when he gave this document to the, the town board, we're, we're going back to the policy touchstones. It's there in the plan, you know, in terms of the plan, all different ways, but it's there. And I think that some of the, the what we want's were certainly in those conversations and they may not be as explicit in, in the comprehensive plan, but they're there and I think that was really important to touch these and to gather these. And I think that research was, was really terrific in moving this forward because it, I think it's gonna really help speed things with the town board and help them. You know, rightly or wrong, they could come up with their own plans, of course, and they will, but to get this thing launched, I, I think it's really important.
To the process, not the process of the initiative, but the, the structure the, the town board makes in order to do internal structure or to do this thing, right? I think is, I mean, I don't know whether this is really a subject for us to advise them on, but I would treat, if I were, if I were them, if I was one of them, I'd be saying, we need to be, we need to structure ourselves differently to do this and it's just not normal business, right? This is something, a project that we need to do. And what we need to do is we need to have one town board member who is responsible to drive this thing, to have access to staff. I need this piece of information with the parks department. I need this piece of information about parking. I need this, you know, to be able to actually, and come, instead of coming to meetings with, well, let's talk about this all over again. Come to meetings with enough information that then it sets enough to make a decision to then take the next step. And I think that there should be, I think there ought to be like a, remember the transportation czar, who was that guy who, who took the airlines and back, was it during HW pushes?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and the guy, he just, he just, he said, okay, you're in charge of the airlines and he took charge of the airlines and he like, changed everything. I think that we need like a chief or a leader, I don't know, a satchel or somebody who is designated to be the person who has the keys to all the mechanisms within town government to bring the information together and keep things going and to bring stuff to them to, to, to keep moving.
I mean, I, I think that ideally makes sense. I think politically, it's, it's very difficult, given, you know.
Well, if you're going through an election right now, so we'll, I mean, it's not gonna ask for that now or suggest that now.
It's, it's just, it's very difficult. But I, you know, I come from the corporate side as, as you do, so we're used to that kind of situation.
If you, if you don't do it, you die.
Yeah, exactly, so it's, it's, it's tough, so.
Okay, well, that was just an aside.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I, I, I fear that I'm gonna be suffering from some frustration as I go through this thing.
Yeah.
So on your thoughts on this, remember the, the scene in Mike Cousin, Benny, and the trial was over? And who's the kid, the, the, the kid, they come out of the courtroom and the kid is just, he just, he can't, he can't express it, he just, and Benny's just trying to get out of town, right? And the kid is just, he can't find the right words and Benny says, take your time, get your thoughts together, get back to me in New York. Take your time, but get your thoughts together, would you?
Yeah.
Because it would be really helpful.
Yes.
It'd be great.
Okay. Message received.
Dick, have we bored you? Any thoughts?
I don't. I have a lot of details that I'll send to Tom.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Great.
So, okay, I will get some additional or, you know, some, some thoughts on, on, on paper.
What I'll do is I'll, I'll, I'll invite feedback and see, you know, we're getting toward the holidays, but perhaps we should have another meeting with the town board before we get too far along, which I'll need on this. Maybe once the RFP is done.
Well, you know what, Bob, it may be helpful for you to, to send an email, you know, saying that I heard that the town board directed me to prepare an RFP and, and kind of say it would be helpful once the RFP is in draft form to have a joint meeting.
Yep, okay.
That makes sense.
You know, it kind, it kind of picks off, it picks off the discussion, the decisions that the town board made tonight and tags on to the directive that they're expecting.
That's a little time to get our thoughts together a little bit.
And we have all this extra time this year, holidays, with Felix not being around.
Oh, don't hold your breath, okay? He may be back.
The present that comes every season, huh?
He may be back this year. I think we survived last year, but who knows this year?
Are you, are you telling us, are you, are you sharing something here?
Do you know something we don't know?
Yeah.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Yeah, potentially.
Okay. All right, good. I think with this off to that tonight, we'll close the meeting and again, I think we should keep on working on this. So Eldon, we'll look, you know, if you can give us some thoughts and next time we meet.
Yes.
We'll see if you can help me understand better. All right, great. All right, nothing else, so is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I, I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good, all right, thank you.
Have a good night. Good night.